Buenas tardes a todos, gracias por venir. Mi nombre es Kevin Elkins, soy el director de la Comisión del Distrito de la Congresencia de los Estados Unidos. Quiero comenzar con el Plegio de Lejía, espero que todo el mundo se levante. Venga, aquí. ¿Qué Plegio de Lejía?
¡Gracias! A los Estados Unidos de América. Y a la República, en la que se sostiene. Una nación, un pueblo. Indivisible, libera, y justa para todos.
Muchas gracias. También voy a anunciar algunos dictaminarios rápidos y luego voy a presentar al Congreso. Tenemos al presidente general de la Comisión, Jim Mollinario, en la Cámara. Mr. President, por favor. Tenemos a Eric Mitchell de la UFA. Eric, por favor. También teníamos a la representante Billie Matarazzo de la oficina del senador Andrew Lanza. También he visto a algunos representantes locales también. Y sin disculpar a nadie, sin disculpar a los sindicatos, a nadie. Probablemente se pondrán en problemas más tarde, pero sin más preámbulos, me gustaría presentar al Congressman Max Rose. Gracias.
¿Cómo están todos? Primero de todo, muchas gracias a todos por venir en este día humilde. Creo que se refiere, de hecho, sé que se refiere a cuán importante es este programa para Staten Island y South Brooklyn. Tenemos a más residuos del fondo de compensación de las víctimas que cualquier distrito en el país. Por último, quiero agradecer al JCC por hospedar esta noche. Primero de todo, quiero agradecer al Defecto de especial maestro de la UCA y al director de Nueva York, Jordi Felman, así como a Candace y Elena por asistir y participar. También quiero agradecer al Dr. Michael Crane, Amida y Marissa por venir y representar al Programa de Salud del World Trade Center. Vamos a darle un aplauso a todos. Estuve a pocos pies de la hora cuando Jon Stewart dio su discurso en la Cámara. Muchos de ustedes vieron los comentarios de Jon cuando llamó a los miembros de la Cámara por no estar allí. Y en general, y lo que es más importante, llamó a la Cámara por tomar su tiempo. Por hacer que los gente vaya a Washington DC y una y otra vez, una y otra vez, una y otra vez, para defender sus propias vidas. No tuvimos que hacer eso, sin embargo, el 11 de octubre, ¿verdad? ¿Vieron la Cámara llegar a la zona cero y petición a los bomberos, a los policías, a los miembros de los sindicatos y a los primeros responsables? Y decir: "Realmente necesitamos que vayan allí". No. La gente hizo lo correcto. Pero también después de que Jon habló, un hombre, que se callé, detective Luis Álvarez, también habló. Perdimos al Sr. Álvarez hace unos días. Su último acto de muerte fue defender este proyecto para ser permanentemente reemplazado. Lo deviamos a él. Lo deviamos al bombero Joseph Walsh, que también perdimos recientemente. Estos dos hombres son recordatorios. Primero, la calidad de los que estaban allí por nosotros en uniforme y demás. Pero también son recordatorios que cada persona que perdemos a causa de enfermedades relacionadas con el 11 de octubre no es diferente a la gente que perdimos en ese día fatale hace 18 años. Son casos de ataque al alquiler alcalde, igual que cualquier otro. Y sin embargo, aquí estamos luchando. Estamos luchando por las familias. También estamos luchando por personas como mi hermano Rob Sarah, que está aquí hoy en la sala principal. Rob, que graduó de la academia el 10 de septiembre de 2001. El primer día del trabajo con la FDNY fue el 11 de octubre. Sin hesitar, corrió a la escena, justo a la luz. Y durante semanas, como muchos de ustedes en esta habitación, con polvo cargado de cemento, aspensos, led y fibra de vidrio, hizo lo que no solo se suponía hacerlo, sino que hizo lo que creo y lo que creo que todos ustedes creen. Sintió que era su deber hacerlo. Saben, he tenido la oportunidad de hablar con tantas personas que son residuos del fondo de compensación de las víctimas y que serán uno día, y a ver qué dijeron. Sin duda, sabiendo lo que sé hoy, sabiendo que estoy enfermo, sabiendo que tengo que enterrar a mis hermanos y mis hermanas, o sabiendo que podría enfermarme uno día, todavía haría lo mismo una y otra vez. Saben, olvidamos que en el inmediato aftermath del 11 de octubre, el gobierno federal dijo que es seguro ir a la zona cero. Olvidamos eso. Dijeron: "Haz una de estas cosas rindas que ponen en tu cara y vas a estar bien". Lo certificamos. ¿Cuán mal está eso? Y se refiere a todo lo que está mal con nuestro sistema, que esto es incluso una pregunta. Entonces, ¿cómo llegamos a donde estamos hoy? Bueno, muchos de ustedes saben que soy demócrata. Pero una parte de la razón por la que llegamos aquí hoy es porque este gobierno ha operado el fondo de compensación de las víctimas superbamente. De hecho, lo han operado tan bien, han eliminado los backlogs, han eliminado algunas burocracias, han puesto las cosas en marcha, en parte, de hecho, también debido a las personas que están en esta estación, que ahora el fondo de compensación de las víctimas está sin dinero. Así que tenemos tres opciones. Una opción es que decimos: "Pongamos la carga, vamos a casa". La Cámara solo existe para personas que son ricos o conectadas. Dos, decimos: "Pongamos la carga, vamos a casa". Tal vez cinco años, para que puedan tener a los policías inspirados y volver a estar y defender sus vidas de nuevo. O tres, podemos rellenar esto durante el período de siglos, para que nunca tengamos que pasar esto una y otra vez. Y hoy decimos que elegimos la opción tres. Elegimos la opción tres. Y así empezamos a construir un esfuerzo de defensa. Y este tren se estaba moviendo mucho antes de que yo fuera electo. El fondo de compensación de las víctimas ya estamos casi ahí. Estamos ahí debido a la ininteligible defensa de muchas mujeres en uniforme y demás que han luchado en las salas de la Cámara. Tenemos más de 300 miembros de la Cámara que han firmado como patrocinadores. Más de 300. Tenemos más de 65 miembros del Senado de Estados Unidos que han firmado como patrocinadores. Y creo que el presidente de los Estados Unidos recordará que está en Nueva York y va a firmar este proyecto. Pero no estamos tomando nada por supuesto. Así que hoy tiene realmente tres objetivos. El primero es que este fondo sigue siendo algo que opera. ¿De acuerdo? En una ocasión, pudimos obtener más de $100,000 de regalo para los individuos constituidos. De hecho, $170,000 en total para las personas que merecían dinero del VCF pero no lo han obtenido aún. Queremos hablarles de todo eso hoy, para que puedan tener la mejor comprensión de este programa de cualquiera en el país. En segundo lugar, no vamos a tomar nada por supuesto. Estas cámaras están aquí por una razón. Estamos enviando un mensaje a Nancy Pelosi, a Chuck Schumer, a Mitch McConnell, al presidente de los Estados Unidos, de que no vamos a ninguna parte. Continuaremos defensando y continuaremos poniendo en primera fila las historias de nuestros héroes. Las historias de personas que no fueran por su coraje, no estaríamos aquí hoy en el país más grande del mundo con la libertad que tenemos. No vamos a irse. Pero en tercer lugar, y lo que más importa, creo que porque creo que esto pasará, vamos a asegurarnos de que Staten Island y South Brooklyn estén más preparados para aplicar al fondo de compensación de las víctimas cuando esté completamente reemplazado el día uno. El día uno, todos ustedes estarán preparados para obtener lo que merecen. Así que para cerrar, vemos en nuestra política hoy una gran cantidad de divisismo. Obstrucciónismo en todas partes, tweets, posts de Facebook, Fox, CNN, MSNBC. No despreciamos a Fox, quien yo sé que está aquí, los amo. Pero lo que no vemos mucho es ejemplos de cómo funciona el gobierno. No vemos a mucha gente juntándose, bicameral, bipartidista, regiones en todo el país, para hacer lo correcto y hacerlo de una manera grande. Bueno, creo que el fondo de compensación de las víctimas es solo eso. Y así te agradezco a todos por todo lo que has hecho por esta ciudad y por este país y en tu defensa. Y vamos a hacer todo lo que podemos para estar allí para ti. Gracias. Dios te bendiga. Dios te bendiga a América.
Y ahora les presento al Dr. Michael Crane del Programa de Salud del World Trade Center.
¿De dónde viene ese voz? Este tipo debe estar con parte de los rebeldes. Así que primero voy a presentar a parte de mi equipo que está sentado atrás, escondiéndose en la parte trasera. Es nuestro director médico de Staten Island, Dr. Elena Lopez, no sé si conocenla. Una doctora fantástica, Bill Scareball, un paciente aquí. También, realmente escondiéndose ahora, es Steve Wallace. Oh, no está escondiéndose tanto, está allí. Así que siempre que voy a dar una charla, siempre traigo a mi doctor y a mi ex oficero de policía. Ella puede cuidarme y él puede llevarme. En caso de que me haga nervioso. Estoy encantado de estar contigo esta noche y agradezco todo lo que el Congressman dijo. Para mí, es el honor de mi vida trabajar para los respondidos del World Trade Center. Muchos de ustedes son respondidos y simplemente, no hay un mayor honor para mí que estar aquí y trabajar para ustedes. Estamos teniendo un tipo de guerra de noticias malas. Un maravilloso, sabio hombre pasó recientemente bastante visiblemente. Y hay muchos, muchos otros que son de ese mismo tipo y que están bastante enfermos. Pero quiero empezar diciendo a ustedes que creo que el programa está en muy buena condición, el Programa de Salud, para prevenir muchas enfermedades. Como saben, ambos monitoreamos a nuestros pacientes con aproximadamente una examinación física anual. Y luego, si encontramos condiciones relacionadas con el World Trade Center, y hay una lista como vean en el sitio web, intentaremos averiguar la conexión con el World Trade. Haremos algo que se llama certificación, donde indicamos que, al menos en mi opinión, o en la opinión de otros médicos, que hay una relación entre enfermedad y el 11 de octubre. Enviamos documentos a Washington DC, a NIH. NIH certificará lo que decimos que es relacionado, a veces no certificará, volverán con preguntas. Pero una vez que tienes la certificación, que esas enfermedades están completamente abiertas a un tratamiento continuo. Y creo que el tratamiento en este punto está evolucionando rápidamente. No solo estamos buscando pasar las enfermedades, pero estamos justo ahora acercándonos a la área que estoy muy emocionado por, que es el tratamiento futuro. Como saben, el mundo dentro de nuestras pequeñas células está abriendo a la examinación. Los tratamientos genéticos ahora no solo son posibles, sino que son recurrentes. Y mirar la información que está dentro de esas muchas células es ahora posible. Así que vamos a estar empezando la sangre manchada en Sinai, como algunos de nuestros otros instituciones lo han hecho. Y guardaremos el sangre de los respondidos que se involuntaron por eso y continuarán haciendo eso a lo largo de los años, para que en algún momento futuro, con suerte, podamos ver, probablemente dentro de cinco o seis años, poder ver el sample de hoy y compararlo con el sample de siete años más tarde, tal vez decir qué está pasando por la carretera en cuanto a las condiciones de salud de ellos. Así que la最早的 posible detección con la mejor información. Es un momento muy emocionante de hacer este tipo de medicina. Pero estoy principalmente aquí para presentar a Jordi y para responderle algunas preguntas esta noche. Así que déjenme darles algunos números rápidos y datos y figuras que podrían estar interesados. Lo primero es que más del 40% de mis pacientes están absolutamente bien. No tienen nada que hacer. Ni siquiera tienen dinero de World Trade. Se expusieron y se recuperaron. Ahora, por qué una grupo es una forma y un individuo es otra forma y otro individuo es otra forma, no sé, no tengo la respuesta. Pero son un grupo enorme de personas, no solo en nuestro grupo, sino también en el grupo de fármacos. Están haciendo muy bien y parecen sanos y parecen geniales. Así que mientras que hay un gran número de enfermedades y muertes, y es, francamente, horrible y agotador, y más que cualquier de nosotros o nadie podría pensar sobre soportar, también hay razón por esperar. Muchos más de nuestros respondidos tienen enfermedades relativamente mineras, que no pensamos que van a progresar. Hay grupos, sin embargo, que continúan sorprendernos y vuelven con enfermedades que son muy rápidas y movidas. Y esos son los que son... aunque se rompen los corazones, como se rompen los corazones de la familia. Tenemos la capacidad de enviar a la gente a centros de tratamiento excelentes, a los Sloan Ketterings, a la NYU, a la Sinai, y obtener un excelente tratamiento, pero algunas de las condiciones se quedan adelante porque no pueden alcanzarlas. Y has visto un ejemplo de una de esas situaciones, lamentablemente, recientemente, y no volvería a eso. Así que mi mensaje a las personas aquí que son respondidas es que hay un montón de cosas que podemos hacer en un alto porcentaje de tiempo. Tenemos la certificación, tenemos las instituciones, tenemos el personal, tenemos los tratamientos y podemos moverse realmente muy rápido. Y lo emocionante para mí, y espero para todos ustedes, es el hecho de que estamos a punto de llegar a la cuestión muy pronto. Y estamos en algunas condiciones donde creemos que podemos realmente prevenir los cances de formar y los cances de propagarse. Haciendo eso con el cáncer de colon, haciendo eso con algunos de los cances, sí, hemos tenido curas. Sí, hemos tenido curas. Vamos a trabajar lo más rápido posible, trabajando lo más duro posible. Así que, ¿hay alguna gente aquí esta noche? Bueno, buenos miembros. Nosotros... Estoy tan orgulloso de trabajar para ti y estoy tan orgulloso de conocerte que, verdaderamente, como dije antes, es el placer de mi vida. ¿Hay alguna sobrevivencia aquí, alguna población de sobrevivientes? Muchas gracias. Agradecimiento a tu Plegio, a tus presidencias y a tu permanencia allí. Así que lo que iba a hacer, si está de acuerdo con ustedes, es solo darles algunos números rápidos, para que tengan una idea básica de lo que está pasando en la población. Vamos a ver si pueden entrar. Pueden pasar. Sí, lo siento. Siempre sé por qué dice algo. Así que tenemos a gente, ¿verdad? Así que pensamos que eran 90,000 respondidos, aproximadamente, en total, en actividades de rescate y recuperación. Hoy en nuestros programas de salud del World Trade Center, tenemos alrededor de 76,000 o así de esos respondidos inscritos. Así que ese es un número realmente decente para un evento que pasó, ya saben, hace 18 años. Pensamos que tenemos una buena comprensión de lo que está pasando en la población. Así que, ¿qué está pasando con la enfermedad? Bien, en cuanto a el cáncer, aproximadamente uno en ocho de nuestros respondidos tiene una forma de cáncer. Eso es aproximadamente, creo que es de alrededor de 9,000 personas de nuestros respondidos. No hay buena noticia sobre eso, por supuesto, excepto por el hecho de que alrededor de 3,000 o así de esos cances son en realidad cances curables de piel relacionadas con el tipo que los tipos irlandeses como yo recibimos después de salir al sol, los cances solares, en los que puedes como... No es lo que pasa aquí, ¿de acuerdo? No es lo que pasa aquí. Veo a alguien sonriendo aquí. Pero el... o el Congressman aquí, solo quiero señalar eso. Así que eso es algo curable. Y hemos estado cuidando y curando eso todo el tiempo aquí, y eso es ondulado. Los otros 6,000 o así son los que son preocupantes. Tienes los cances de la sangre, los cances de la colon y la leukemia. Y sí, tenemos algunos muy serios, con cáncer de la prostate, ¿verdad? Aunque recientemente mi colega, el Dr. Opel, hizo un paper que finalmente está empezando a dar la llave para que nos entendamos cómo las cosas como el World Trade Center podrían haber causado esos cances. Hay muchas posibilidades emocionantes de nuestra prevención. Vemos cances de pierna, vemos linfomas. Los linfomas son uno de los que tengo la más miedo porque son muy difíciles de diagnosticar a veces. Esto te engañará y es difícil obtener las respuestas. Pero muchos de los otros cances pueden ser tratados. De nuevo, si se captan temprano, pueden ser curados. Y podemos hablar de el cáncer como un historial pasado en nuestra población si podemos conseguir que nuestros amigos vengan regularmente y cuiden de todos sus pruebas de escaneo. Y cuando salgamos cinco, seis, siete años más tarde, si estamos en nuestra sangre manchada y en nuestras comprensiones genéticas, espero que el cáncer se convierta en un historial pasado para todos nosotros, que podamos derrocarle toda la mierda antes de empezar. Así que estoy tremendamente emocionado por el programa. Creo que ofrece un gran beneficio para nuestros respondidos. Estoy aquí para decirles que hay esperanza. Hay esperanza para todas estas condiciones, incluyendo el PTSD, incluyendo la depresión, incluyendo la enfermedad de la garganta, incluyendo todos los síntomas y incluyendo todos los cances. Así que tomen duro, trabajen con nosotros, estamos emocionados por trabajar con ustedes. Hay mucho fuego en el aire, pero el sol tiene que venir. Gracias.
Hola, buenas tardes. Muchas gracias a todos por venir esta noche, es realmente un evento increíble. Como el Congressman dijo, soy Jordi Felman, soy defecto especial maestro del fondo de compensación de las víctimas, o VCF. Quiero agradecer al Congressman Rose por hospedar este evento, por invitarnos a hablar a behalf de la VCF y nuestro grupo especial maestro de la charla, y por tu continua apoyo a nuestro programa y tus señales anteriores. Realmente apreciamos la oportunidad de hablar con todos ustedes y escucharles directamente. Y también echo el grito mi amiga, el Dr. Crane, del comentario sobre que ser un verdadero privilegio y honor servir a esta comunidad. Así que gracias por eso. Trabajamos esta presentación en tres partes. Primero, voy a pasar quien se califica para el fondo de compensación de las víctimas, qué tipo de documentación necesitas para subir para apoyar tu solicitud y qué tipos de compensación están disponibles. También señale y explico algunas comunes misconcepciones que escuchamos sobre el programa. Luego, voy a hablar un poco sobre algunas de las tendencias que hemos visto desde diciembre de 2015 cuando nuestro programa fue reautorizado. Y luego, finalmente, lo que sospecho es lo que muchos de ustedes estaban preguntando, voy a entrar en cómo estas tendencias, junto con los requisitos que se establecen en el estatuto, informaron nuestra decisión de reducir los premios y qué significa para tus reclutas. Entendemos que hay preguntas y preocupaciones sobre el shortfall en el financiamiento y la reducción en los premios. Y quiero decir en primer lugar que estamos conscientes dolorosamente de la injusticia de la situación y si hubiera habido una opción diferente disponible, habríamos tomado ella. Pero como hablaré más tarde, los números y la realidad de lo que estábamos viendo nos dejó sin elección. Solo unos pocos comentarios de casa. También tengo a mi personal en la fila principal, Elena Ariel y Candace. Y sé que el personal del Congressman había enviado hojas de preguntas. Ya saben, y llegaremos a eso al final, el Congressman moderará. Pero solo les pido que no hagan preguntas sobre reclutas personales, no podemos abordarlas ahora. Si tienen preguntas sobre el estatus de su solicitud, pueden darnos su información al final del programa y nos aseguraremos de que alguien de nuestro personal le responda a su pregunta. Así que solo un poco de fondo. El fondo de compensación de las víctimas proporciona compensación financiera a aquellos que han muerto o enfermar como resultado de su exposición al 11 de octubre. Como muchas personas saben, está disponible para policías, bomberos y otros primeros responsables que han muerto por su exposición. Pero en realidad también está disponible a un universo mucho más amplio de reclutas. Eso incluye trabajadores de construcción, otros trabajadores de la labor y trabajadores de los sindicatos, personas que se involuntaron durante la limpieza o en los esfuerzos de remoción de la suciedad, trabajadores locales que tenían oficinas o sitios de trabajo en Lower Manhattan, y aquellos que vivían o iban a la escuela en la área. Una cosa importante a notar, sé que el Dr. Crane mencionó respondidos y sobrevivientes. El VCF no hace ninguna distinción en términos de criterios de reclutas, de cantidades de premios. Esos son términos que se definen en el estatuto para fines del enrollment del Programa de Salud. Puedes ir a diferentes centros basado en la capacidad en la que estuviste en Lower Manhattan antes o después del 11 de octubre. Es completamente irrelevante para fines del recluta del VCF. Así que, ¿qué necesitan para ser elegibles? Lo primero que necesitan hacer es que tengan el tiempo de registrarse su solicitud. Nuestro programa, el fondo de compensación de las víctimas y el Programa de Salud del World Trade Center trabajan muy fuertemente juntos. Exchamos de información, pero somos dos programas separados. Eso significa que si estás inscrito en el Programa de Salud, no estás automáticamente inscrito o registrado en nuestro programa. Tienes que pasar por un proceso de registración separado. Así que, ¿qué hace la registración? Simplemente preserva tu derecho a firmar una solicitud en el futuro. No significa que pierdas ningún derecho legal. Es básicamente como un placeholder. También no tienes que estar enfermo para registrarte. De hecho, animamos a cualquiera que estaba en la zona de exposición, de la que hablaremos, en el sur de la calle Canal, en Manhattan, a registrarse lo más pronto posible, incluso si eres sano, cuando eres sano, porque hay límites en el estatuto que no queremos que te pierdas. Así que, ¿cuáles son los límites de registración? Bueno, cada persona tiene un límite de registración diferente. Generalmente hablando, tienes que registrarte dentro de dos años de la fecha de tu carta de certificación del Programa de Salud del World Trade Center. Esa es la fecha que empieza el reloj, porque esa es para las personas, la fecha en la que te dijeron por primera vez por una entidad gubernamental que tu condición estaba relacionada con tu exposición al 11 de octubre. Muchas veces hemos oído en los primeros años del programa: "Sí, tuve este malestar" o "Tuve asma", pero no me ocurrió todavía hasta que hablé con mi doctor, hasta que hablé con esta persona, que en realidad podía haber sido relacionado con mi tiempo en el sitio o en la puerta de abertura o algo así. Así que reconocemos que en algunos casos, la gente ha estado inscrito en el Programa de Salud durante muchos años pero no estaba consciente de que era eligible para firmar una solicitud con el VCF. En esos casos, todavía os animamos a registrarte su solicitud. Debemos negar la solicitud en la primera instancia, pero ese no es el final de la carretera. Tendrás la oportunidad de discutir la decisión y explicar bajo juramento lo que sabías sobre el programa y cuándo, y no podemos considerar excepciones a los límites. Así que, como dije, la registración es el primer paso del proceso. Es muy fácil, tarda cinco minutos. Puedes hacerlo en línea en nuestro sitio web o puedes llamar a nuestra línea de ayuda y ellos lo harán para ti. Y como dije, el límite de registración varía de solicitud a solicitud. Eso es diferente de firmar una solicitud. Ese es el segundo paso. Firmas una solicitud solo si te enfermas y tienes la información y documentación que necesitas para apoyar tu solicitud. A diferencia de la registración, hay un límite de firma para todas las solicitudes, y ese es el 18 de diciembre de 2020. Obviamente, como saben del Congressman y de la prensa últimamente, hay esfuerzos que están bien en camino en la Cámara para extender el VCF hacia el futuro, pero estamos operando bajo el actual estatuto, que establece el límite para todas las solicitudes en el 18 de diciembre de 2020, y tú también. El segundo aspecto de la eligibility es que tienes que ser certificado. Tienes que ser certificado por una condición de salud física por el Programa de Salud del World Trade Center. Eso significa el lenguaje de certificación que el Dr. Crane se refería a. Eso significa que han determinado, un doctor ha... have determined, a doctor has determined that your condition is related to your 9/11 exposure. As Dr. Crane mentioned, the Health Program covers a wide variety of conditions, respiratory, digestive, cancers, and the VCF relies on certifications by the Health Program as proof that you have an eligible condition. We do, while our programs are separate, we do regularly exchange information. So if you are certified for one or more conditions, we'll get that information directly from the Health Program. In other words, you don't need to submit proof that you're certified for a condition in order to satisfy this requirement. One thing to keep in mind, and I'll go over this a little bit more when we talk about compensation, is that we do get the name of whatever condition you are certified for, the Health Program provides to us. They do not, however, provide us with any of your medical records. That's not relevant for this piece, but it does go to the compensation piece, which I'll get to in a minute. The other thing to note is that, under the statute, the VCF only compensates for physical health conditions. So while you may be treated for mental health conditions by the Health Program, those are not compensable by our program. Okay. And then the third element for eligibility is that you have to show that you were, what we call, present at the site, which means that you were in the area in Lower Manhattan, south of Canal Street, or along the routes of debris removal, at any point from September 11, 2001 through May 30, 2002, which marked the official end of the recovery and cleanup efforts. So what should you submit to prove presence? We generally require two forms of proof. If you were working down in the area through your employer or your union, either as a responder or through your ordinary employment, you can submit a letter or other document from your employer describing where you were located. You can also submit affidavits, warrant statements from coworkers, friends, neighbors, who saw you in the area and can describe your whereabouts and activities at the time. We do recognize that it can be very difficult to find proof for a variety of reasons. We're now almost 18 years past 9/11, and people moved away, changed jobs, lost touch with former coworkers, lost or destroyed old documents. So if you have trouble finding documentation showing you were there, again, you should still file a claim. We may deny your claim in the first instance for insufficient proof, but you can appeal that decision and provide testimony under oath at a hearing, which can support presence. And I would say, we have a, our office is in Lower Manhattan. It's almost exclusively dedicated to the hearings process. The staff members I have here are intimately involved in that. It's a very informal process. It is under oath and we have a court reporter, but we always like to start off by saying, it's really just, it's meant for you to give us more information than what you can provide into some pieces of paper. It's an opportunity for you to tell your story. Okay. So if you qualify, you meet those eligibility criteria, we compensate for, there are two types of loss that are available, or at least available in some cases. The first is non-economic loss, which is our pain and suffering award. And the second is economic loss, which is compensation for lost wages and benefits. The non-economic loss piece, this is, this is an amount that varies by the type, severity, and impact of your condition on your daily life. All claimants who are eligible qualify for non-economic loss, even if you don't submit a piece of paper showing what your conditions are. Like I said, we get that information from the Health Program. There are limits to the amount that we can compensate by statute. The statute caps the pain and suffering amount at $250,000 for cancer and $90,000 for non-cancer conditions. And then, within those caps, the awards are scaled for severity, recognizing, for example, that a condition like asthma can be mild and well-controlled, or it can be totally debilitating. So they're scaled to account for that. Now, one distinction I just wanted to point out is that you heard me say earlier that if you are certified for a condition, you don't need to submit proof of that, that you have that condition, to show that you have, that you have an eligible condition. But for purposes of proving loss, the amount of loss that we would compensate you for, we will award the baseline amount, which is $10,000, unless you submit medical records showing ongoing severity. And again, because the Health Program doesn't provide us with those records, if your condition is severe, you should submit medical records showing that. The other thing to note about the non-economic loss award is that it's not tied to the number of certified conditions. It's based on the conditions themselves and how severe they are. The economic loss piece is available to really a smaller subset of claimants. It's only awarded if you had to stop working because you became disabled due to your eligible condition and you've been determined to be disabled by a government entity, like the Social Security Administration, like Workers' Comp, like one of the New York City Pension Funds. In that case, we're kind of, we're considering this alternative universe where what you would have earned had you not gotten sick. And to calculate that, we are looking at a number of different, very individualized pieces of information. How old were you when you became disabled? You make assumptions about how much longer you would have remained in the workforce. What were you earning at that time? How disabled are you? Were you determined to be completely disabled from any work or disabled only from doing a particular type of job? We also look at what kind of benefits you were getting, pension benefits, medical benefits, and then we put them into a calculation and project out what you would have earned had you not gotten sick from your 9/11 exposure. All of the awards are, we are required to subtract by statute, what are called collateral offsets, which are benefit payments that you are receiving or you are entitled to receive as a result of your eligible condition. So that can include things like, if you are receiving Social Security disability benefits or disability pension benefits, or you got a lawsuit settlement, those will be deducted from your award. We also, like I said before, we do calculate all awards individually. We have a large team that is looking at every piece of information that you're submitting with your claim and calculating an award that is specifically tailored to your circumstances. One thing I wanted to note also is that we are a dynamic process where we recognize that things change over time, that you might have been certified years ago with rhinitis, runny nose, or asthma, and then, hopefully not, but then are later diagnosed with a cancer. Or you started, you applied, you got a non-economic loss award for pain and suffering, and then your condition became so debilitating, you had to stop working and have a disability determination. So our process allows for you to reopen or amend your claim if you are certified for a new condition or suffer a new loss. And so that's just something to keep in mind about the process. So what's changed? Not getting too deep in the weeds, I know it's getting late, I don't want eyes to glaze over, but I did wanted to take a couple minutes to explain some context about what we're required to do and some trends we've been observing. We are required by statute to conduct an annual assessment to ensure two things. One, that we don't exceed our appropriated amount, which is $7.375 billion, and two, that we're prioritizing funding for people with the most debilitating conditions. In doing that reassessment, we consider a number of factors, including our claims processing activity to date and evolving trends. We're basically trying to predict claim filing activity in the future. Based on ongoing assessments, back in August of last year, we began talking about the potential of a funding shortfall. There was a significant amount of press coverage around the anniversary last year, and last October, we published what's called a Notice of Inquiry, which was to seek public comment on solutions to that potential problem. And our goal was really to be as proactive and transparent as possible, given what we knew at the time. The publication of that Notice of Inquiry did result in a deluge of new claims, which we see as a good thing, in that people who this program was intended for started coming forward. But the influx was far greater than we anticipated, and it forced us to look more closely at the trends and try to figure out how to address the situation. So what are the trends? So we've seen increases in number of areas, claim filing rates. We received more claims from October to January of this year than we usually get in a full year. We got 4,000 claims in January alone. Why? Part of that was because of the publication of the Notice of Inquiry. But also, we've been seeing an increased number of deceased claims. Those are claims that are filed on behalf of someone who's died as a result of their eligible condition. We actually have more deceased claims filed in the first half of the year than we had in the first four to five years of the program. We also are seeing an increased rate of serious illnesses like cancer, and in part, that is because of latency periods with cancer. That is, it can take many years after exposure for the cancer to develop and manifest. And we have, right now, about a third of our claimant population where we've issued awards are cancer claimants. And the other reason is a lot of outreach efforts, efforts to raise awareness about our program, particularly in the non-responder or survivor community. Earlier on in the program, it was about 14% of our claims were from survivors and the rest were from responders. Now it's close to 40%. And then the other piece of it, as the Congressman referenced, is we have been issuing awards faster than we ever have. Last year, we issued 8,600 compensation determinations totaling about $1.5 billion. That's close to the same amount we issued in numbers and dollars in the first four years of the program. So what does that mean? That's resulted in a decrease in the funds that remain. So just for perspective, the VCF has awarded $5.2 billion to nearly 23,000 individuals. We have about $2 billion remaining, with over 20,000 claims and amendments that we know about, that we still need to decide, and thousands more claims that we expect to be filed before December 18, 2020. That means we have less than half as much money left for almost the same number of So those are the numbers and trends that we're faced with. And in trying to figure out how to address that, we adopted the approach that many people suggested in response to this Notice of Inquiry, which was to apply across-the-board reductions to all claims to account for the funding shortfall. So what does that look like? What does that mean for you? So we are reducing awards 50 to 70%, depending on when the claim was filed. For claims or amendments that were filed on or before February 1 of this year, they're reduced by 50%. Claims or amendments filed after, on or after February 2 are reduced by 70%. The reduction is applied to the non-economic loss and the economic loss, as I talked about before. The offsets, however, are not reduced. That's because of the way that the statute is worked. You'll see a little asterisk after the February 1, 2019, and I just wanted to mention that because it's meant to remind me, to tell you, that we do, one exception to that is what we call our expedite claims. We have a separate process for claims where someone is terminally ill or is suffering significant financial hardship. They're about to be evicted, foreclosed upon, their utilities are getting shut off. They can file a request to expedite their claim and we will process it in usually less than a month, from beginning to end, if we have everything, all the information we need. And I flag that because any expedite claim, even if filed after February 1, will only be reduced by 50%. So why did we decide to reduce awards? Obviously, the numbers, but there were other key considerations we had to take into account. One, the statutory requirements, and also policy considerations. So, sorry, I keep turning my head. This is unfortunate position. So like I said, the statute requires us to ensure that we're not exceeding our appropriation, obviously, and that we're prioritizing funding for the people with the most debilitating condition. On the policy front, there were a few things that drove the decision. One was that we wanted to make sure to make some award for anyone who files a claim before December 18, 2020. Some people suggested, just keep paying out full amount until the money runs out. But we didn't think that that was, number one, fair, and number two, even allowed under the statute. We also tried to make some accommodation for claims that were pending as of February 1, because originally, we had hoped that those claims would not be impacted at all by any sort of policy changes. We also want to make sure that we maintain some reserve in case there was an unanticipated increase in filing. We wanted to keep extra money for claims with the most debilitating conditions. And our administrative costs are all taken out of the same pot that the compensation is for claimants. And so we do, while our administrative costs are incredibly low, because we have some incredibly hard-working, efficient people who do, who wear many hats in our program, we still have to account for those costs. And then we also wanted to try to minimize the difficulty of implementing these changes. And, you know, we can't comment on the pending legislation, but the language in the current draft, as the Congressman referred to, in the House and the Senate, would restore the cuts that were made due to the funding shortfall. They would true up the claim, basically. And so with that in mind, we have been flagging claims that are being reduced so that if the legislation passes and calls for those awards to be trued up, as it does now, we can expeditiously identify them and process those additional awards. So I know that was a lot of information, but here is the information about where you can find even more information about us, on our website. Our helpline is an amazing resource. And I will turn it back over to the Congressman for questions. Thank you.
I sit for Fox. So first of all, Director Felbin, Dr. Crane, thanking for everything you have done and that you'll continue to do for our heroes. Before we go to a couple of questions, because I know that was a lot of information, I do want to acknowledge my staff, who has done an incredible amount of work on this, starting with James Clayton, who organized this event, has led our Victims Compensation Fund efforts. James, why don't you? And then the rest of my staff, if you could just please stand up so everyone can see you and give you a round of applause. Can't you stand, do you have a problem? I asked them all to stand, and I want to acknowledge, not just because they have done extraordinary work, day in and day out, as I know Director Felbin and Dr. Crane, your staff has as well, but also because as you navigate this bureaucracy, we got our toll-free numbers, we got our websites, we want to help. We want to be able to not just help explain the steps, but be there with you, step by step by step. That's what our office is all about. That's what they've done thus far, and that's what they'll continue to do. This is too important. So start with the first question from George Buzario. Start with the easier one. George, where you at? George, this was too long for George. All right. Well, this is a question that will apply to some of you all. I want to know if I submit I want to know if I submit my claim to the VCF, does the VCF pay out 100% or 50%? So, bad news is, is because of all the issues that we've spoken about, if this legislation is not passed, it's 50%, it's 30%, it's 20%. But when we pass this legislation, it's right back up to 100. Now, that doesn't mean you're applying again. No, thank you. That is retroactive. You know, we got a lot of elected officials that like to tweet out on 9/11, never forget? You all have seen that before, right? They have pictures of cops and firemen in their office that say, "When I went to New York, I visited this firehouse and I took a selfie." But if they don't vote for this, they don't get to do that anymore. Because not only are they forgetting, but they're insulting all of us. So that day's coming next month, or the month thereafter, or the fall, I'm not going to overpromise, but that day will come. We're going to hold them to their word. So moving on to Lawrence DeRosa. Lawrence, all right. Lawrence Lattner? Which I want, I'm a little laddie. I'd like to know, why the diagnosis terms are always changing? 9/11 illnesses are always being changed, and the more information/studies, the less is done. Never forget versus all of us. I like that, man. That question might be a bit over my pay grade, so I'm going to pass this off to Doc or Director, if you guys want to address why things are constantly changing.
This, uh, here in the back? Hi. So, yeah, the list, the list do change. Basically, the, when we started off, what we were seeing was these conditions that looked like people had been irritated by dust, like asthma, like rhinitis, angitis, all kinds of itises, right? And swallow the dust, you got a esophageitis. In addition to that, you had the mental health conditions, post-traumatic stress, depression, et cetera. As time went on, the conditions became more severe. Chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, COPD, other forms of lung disease, and then increasingly cancers. So, basically, the list has changed. Some of the, some of the diseases on the list have now been connected with other illnesses. Like, for example, this is not a really good one, but it's the only one I can think of at the moment. Depression is a condition all by itself, but we know, right, for a fact that people, I should stand up, I'm sorry, I'm being rude. We know for a fact that people who have cancer may also get depression, right, because of all the circumstances. So, the way we store the illnesses, the way we code them have changed because the conditions themselves that are present in our population have changed for a lot of people. So that's a very roundabout answer, and I hope I got to the, to the beat of the question.
I just did. I'm like, you're a hype man. My understanding is, is that you're saying that the illnesses do, it gets more expansive, not restrictive. So that, that I hope is, that I hope is good news, that as we're becoming more intelligent and educated about this issue, more and more people and families are, these services and these opportunities are becoming available. And I hope you all can spread the word about that. That if you know people who were down there at Ground Zero, and they're experiencing a healthcare crisis or even a sickness at this point, and they say, "Oh, I checked their website five years ago, it wasn't on there. I went and visited a health center five years ago, and they said this isn't eligible," please tell them that may no longer be the case. And please have them reach out to our office so we can advocate on their behalf. Next one's also a doozy. James Smith. James, all right. How come you have to choose between your own health issues from being down at Ground Zero and the loss of a family member and applying for the U.S. Victims of Foreign Terrorists Fund? Director, would that, would that apply to you, I think?
That is, that's by stat, the United States Victims of State-sponsored Terrorism Fund, the USVST Fund, that statute specifically prohibits it, that's why.
Why? Why? It's two different, you know, positions. It's the loss of a family member versus my own injuries. Am I able to claim a loss through the VCF?
By statute, you can't, I can't get into the legislative history or intent there.
Yeah, I gotta choose between one or the other.
As of right now, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think it's wrong.
You know, it's an interesting point, you're right. Would that change, that statutory change, would equate to a massive, massive amount of new spending while we're fighting for the Victims Compensation Fund? I'm with you. I'm with you. I think that when we're serving our heroes and we're serving families, money is not the concern.
But how do people fall into that situation, that a loss, family members also work down there? How many people, you know, what does it add up to?
Oh, you're saying if multiple family members were affected by that?
No, if I, like myself, how many people out there are like me that lost a family member versus, versus a loss, you know, an injured?
So you being personally injured as well as losing, losing a family member?
How many people that were down there were in the same predicament?
Is there anything else to add to that?
Yeah, we don't have data.
So what I will say is that, here's what I will say to that, because I do think that's a good point. And this is our first fight. I think we all would agree on that. Victims Compensation Fund, getting that permanently reestablished, renewed, replenished, that's our first fight. And then we will sincerely, honestly, look at fighting that next fight, because you make a good point. I won't take that away from you.
Could I just interject?
Please. We're going to run a mic up to you, if you don't mind? James?
I'm in the same situation as that gentleman who just spoke. And the problem is, you had no idea of what you could get from either fund, so you basically had to flip a coin and guess which fund to choose from. Because that fund, I didn't know ahead of time how much I could get, and this fund is the same thing, basically.
You're talking about the Foreign Terrorist?
Yeah, the same fund that he just mentioned.
Okay, so initially, and we will fully explore this, but my understanding is, and Director, you seem to have supported this, that Foreign Terrorist Fund would not apply to these instances, statute, based off statute?
That, the statute that governs that program specifically prohibits it. So if someone files claims in both, they have to choose which one they want to proceed. I understand your question, I'm not, I can't speak to whether or not it's, you know, it should be changed, but the way that it's currently set up, it's correct that you can proceed with claims.
Right, so, so I think that the point is, is that for everyone here going forward, it is the Victims Compensation Fund, that is the game that's in town. And it seems that we are looking at two separate things, whether eligibility for foreign, the Foreign Terrorist Fund, but also expansion of Victims Compensation Fund in the event that you personally are dealing with something, as well as have lost a family member. And listen, both concerns we're taking, we will take seriously. So thank you. And, wait, I got another one from Sal Farino. Sal, you around?
I'm over here.
Hey, Sal. I understand that people such as the spouses who are not at the site, but contracted the same issues from washing the clothes of first responders are not being fought for, and you're saying are not eligible?
Correct.
Director, is anyone want to speak there?
Yeah. We don't cover secondary exposure because under the statute, you had to have been in Lower Manhattan at some point between September 11th and May 30th, 2002. So if your spouse at some point came into Lower Manhattan and was there for enough of a period of time that the health program could link that exposure, then that might be a separate eligible claim, but we don't allow claims for secondary exposure because the statute doesn't allow for it.
Yes, I understand that, but when they were bringing the debris to the dump on Staten Island, those people were eligible, and they weren't at the site. And there's a lot of spouses that contracted cancer from washing the clothes of first responders. And, you know, we just let that go undone? It really isn't right for someone to lose their life because of that, because, you know, you're covered in the white dust of death, is what it was, and you brought it home, you took as much off as you could, but you couldn't get it all off, and your family was subject to it. So it really, it's hurtful. It's hurtful.
I didn't know we could submit a question, but I...
No, please.
I asked my husband Philip Berger to break a cancer, July 27th, about 18 years ago. I thought I had many years ago. I haven't gotten my award, my target.
Can't hear a word.
Can we get him the mic, please?
Yeah.
All right, Sal, I'm going to acknowledge you as well, we're not... Sal, you mind just a...
Yeah.
Okay.
I actually hadn't thought of it.
Just one second.
Okay, my name is Anita Berger. My husband, Philip Berger, was in communications with the fire department. He was in charge of the fire alarm system, and he was down at the pile, front and center, never came home. He called me at my school, I was teaching in Brooklyn at the time, and he said, "I'm not coming home. I'm calling in all the trucks from all five boroughs, the bucket trucks, the E C Communications." And they had generators on them, and that's how they were able to continue deviating through the night and to try to save anybody who was in the pile. He died of brain cancer. Originally, my claim was not accepted because brain cancer hadn't made the list, but I was up day and night doing research. There was a policeman who had three children from Smithtown, Long Island, who died of brain cancer, and there have been several, many since. But I didn't realize until G D Kelly had spoken to me from the police department. She said to me, "I had brain, I had breast cancer back in 2007, and I don't have the BRCA gene. I went to NYU and spoke to a geneticist." Oh.
Okay.
I'm singing.
Oh, no, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Two bikes, we'll be okay.
Usually when I'm singing, I don't use the microphone. I don't need to. But my point is, G D Kelly also mentioned that, is there anyone who is monitoring spouses who did, you know, take care of washing the clothes and sleeping with the person, et cetera, et cetera, had me on his skin? He never came home the first night, and then when he did, just made me take off his outer clothing, and he showered, went to bed, and then went back down there the next day. So that's a consideration. The other thing is the surrogate court, and I know I'm not the only one, because I'm on a private website with other spouses whose husbands have passed away of suffering. The surrogate court is holding up my award, and they made me jump through all these hoops and file extra documents that, I had to hire a second lawyer to file documents with the surrogate court, and I'm still waiting for my award. So it really isn't fair that that's happening, because it's been so many years, so I'm interested in both...
So you're still waiting for some of this?
Still waiting, and also, I was told originally when I filed, I don't know if this affects anybody in the room, that we were going to be reimbursed out-of-pocket medical expenses. And then I was told it's going to come after you get your award, so now there's very little money. And also, I took Phil down to Duke, to the Brain Tumor Center, and I saw a lot of people at Duke at the time, and I questioned them at the airport who went there, because there was no, there were no studies being done, nothing treatments at the time in New York. So we took him down, first to NIH, they had no clinical trials, but Duke did, and we had him in a clinical trial. So when I tried to submit the expenses for the flights back and forth, because we had to go every other button, they said, "No, they're not going to reimburse for that." So that's my story.
So Dan and Sal as well. It's tough to stand here and not have an immediate answer for you. I'll say that, honestly. But what I can tell you is that, first of all, I think I want Doc to speak to this. When we get this refunded or replenished, and I am confident that we're going to continue working to get that done, we're not going to spike the football and act like everything is done. At that point, and even now, starting today, these are incredibly legitimate concerns that you bring up, and it's the exact type of stuff that we can fight on two different avenues. One is bureaucracy advocating for you day in, day out, and I promise you that my staff and I will do that. But the second is that if it requires legislation, that we'll fight for you in the halls of Congress as well. Doc, do you want to add anything? If you want to, if you speak to that, I'd be happy.
First of all, I'm terribly sorry for your loss, and I hope that your health is now stabilized and you're feeling better. But if you would care to speak to, I will give my contact information to a member of the Congressman's staff, to all the members of the Congressman's staff, actually. And if you would just like to give your contact information to them, and one of my medical folks will give you a call, possibly Dr. Glombivik, who's right in the back there, because it's a very, what you just said, and what just came out of the spousal issue is extremely important. To be completely transparent with you, I hadn't thought about that in years. I thought about it at the beginning of all this, and I haven't thought about it since. Shame on me, but give me a chance to catch up. I'm sure that some of our young physicians and staff would be very interested in studying this problem, and we could probably discuss it with the government as well. So you're not alone, you're not going to be left alone. Anybody else who brought this up, you're not going to be left alone. I have a wife, she's very nice to me most of the time, and so I make sure, we'll want to make sure that spouses are, get their cares taken care of. So thank you for bringing that up.
Absolutely.
My daughter Natalie Berger has finished her fellowship at Mount Sinai.
Wonderful.
She's retired, she's going to be starting at the Pentagon.
Fantastic. Congratulations. Congratulations.
And I know that, that I do want to get to, it can be frustrating not to be able to speak to individual cases here. Part of the reason why my entire staff is here, as well as staff from both the Health Centers, as well as the Victims Compensation Fund, is that we do want to work with you on each of these individual cases, whether it's immediately after this concludes, I think we're around the 10-minute mark, but also going forward with future phone calls. Sir?
Max, my name is Dan. I have some information that most people here probably don't realize, but 9/11 cleanup went on well into 2007, the F D N Y. 9/11 health programs only cover people who were exposed before July 31st, 2002. There are many people like myself who spend months breaking up Ground Zero rubble and have become ill because of it, but who were hired after July of 2002. I've reached out to Senator Gillenbrand's office on multiple occasions to see if anything could be done about this, and I was told it's unfortunate, but nothing can be done. I don't understand how that's an acceptable response.
Well, it's not an acceptable response, and we will work for you. That's what we're here for. That's what we're here for.
What would need to be done?
Well, so what would happen if it does? We'd have to change the legislation, and I'm not going to overpromise you. All right? You see how hard this fight is? This, you know, we have a tremendous amount of co-sponsors on this, but that didn't come easy. It took me two months to get every member of the freshman class, 66, signed on to But, like I just said, we're learning about new problems, and that's why we're having this meeting, yours, the spouse situation. So we're not going to spike the football. If you were cleaning up rubble at any time, if you were participating in recovery at any time, I think we should be there for you. But that's not going to be an easy fight, but we'll be there with you each step of the way. All right? Thank you. Go, let's get you a mic. I don't know where's... Well, we'll do that, and then, you know, I'm sorry, sir, I jumped the cut.
Thank you, Congressman, for your efforts on behalf of veterans. I'm a veteran, so I appreciate that. Cancer is our immunological reaction to numerous rare and other types... Cancers are immunological reaction to numerous rare earth and other toxic living materials that were prevalent in the air at the World Trade Center on 9/11, and thereafter for three months. A large number of first responders and other victims have also developed severe cases of rheumatoid and osteoarthritis, according to physicians in the World Trade Center program. Uh, I'm speaking for primary, I'm a, as a primary caretaker for a 9/11 victim. Uh, the, the rheumatoid and osteo is also an immunological reaction. Cancers are certified by the fund as qualifying for compensation and treatment, but rheumatoid and osteo, though, are not. Even though the first head of the health program, WTC Health Program, lobbied very hard to get them included, why are they not included? They are as very much debilitating as many of other certified elements. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, and in line with that, I did just get another question that sinks in with that from Lori Eisenberg, Lori, Lori? Oh, she left, okay. Um, Lori asked her any case studies going on with people who have rare diseases and are autoimmune diseases that are not yet covered? So I think the big picture question is, what is the process to, for new diseases to get covered? How do we advocate for that? And where are these specific instances that you mentioned, what's the current status for that, Doc?
So, um, thank you for the question. Um, that, uh, group conditions is being studied now by, I believe, two different independent studies. They have not wrapped up yet. One of the problems with this particular condition is that it's very, very hard, uh, to get the cases. I know that's hard to believe, but it takes a lot of information, because they're really bad diseases, they involve many different systems, people are going to five, six, seven, eight, nine doctors at a time, and even getting the records in to review them is a bear. Um, but it is ongoing, and it's of great, great personal interest to me and to my colleagues at, at all the centers. So we hope to have news back to you soon. Basically, the question is, is the rate that we see in the responder somewhat greater than we would see in the normal population? And that's the question that needs to be asked and answered. Uh, that, a negative answer doesn't mean it's not related, but we can't define it by the usual way we do things, which is by taking history and doing studies of statistics and epidemiology. So we're working on it.
And Doc, just to, just to add to that, though, if someone approaches my office and suffering from a rarer disease, is that something that we can approach you with, and then what would you see as a timeline potentially to get this added?
So, um, let's take the rare cancers, this is it. So, um, NIOSH has a list of rare cancers that have, that are being covered now. So if you have a rare cancer, you should get into the program as a responder or as a survivor, and get access to all the information about all the cancers that are covered, and see if your particular issue is on it. It might be. I can't even recall some of the names because they're so rare. Um, so the idea is to get active in the program. If the condition is not covered, okay, and you feel that it is World Trade Center-related, Dr. Howard at NIOSH has opened the door to have people petition directly, or with the support of representation, um, and, and he will listen. And he has listened, and he has responded. I think the brain cancer is an example where he got the evidence, sadly too late, but that he, he has added those conditions to the list.
Sir?
Congressman, my name is Alan Berardi. I was a public New York City Transit Attorney, 14th and 6th, and transit had two miles of trucks going in the aftermath. I'm here to, first of all, um, I grew up on Staten Island my whole life, now I'm out in Jersey. Um, I'm here, first of all, uh, first and foremost to say, this program, the World Trade Center Medical Treatment Program, has been wonderful. It, for me personally, is like rolling out the red carpet, personally speaking. I know that they all work very hard, and they are very on top of individuals. Second of all, everything that's been going on as far as the reauthorization, uh, uh, bill, everything's been going on, I've been down in Washington, DC many times on that too as well for the reauthorization. This is multiple, multiple people working consistently together simultaneously in multiple agencies. I am here first and foremost to testify, as well as my picture was in the Staten Island area, September 14th, 2001. Quarter of the page, which I have the usual paperwork in here, I'm not here to brag that this is a national tragedy that people are facing today. Our country has been around many years, and we do not wanna see this ever again. First and foremost, I'm not gonna just say it was public transit, I was underneath that whole site. It was no pick. People, the people that experienced this are part of this program. And if I could just say, put us into perspective, um, the medical people that are on, on stage, when, when you just did a presentation as far as 90,000 people, put that in perspective, because I was here three years of politicians, not to take this out of context, but politicians always talk about numbers. Well, here's the number, have you ever seen a giant jet plane? Right? When they're flipping the corner out, 90,000 people, that's 90,000 people in my position. People are sitting here years later, dying. I am here first and foremost to testify, this was one of my badges, I had the emergency management badge, and I signed up at Chambers at West Street, which was a military checkpoint, because it was explained to me that it would be shot on the site, polluted. Serious stuff was going on, it was a serious stuff out there. And this, I am testifying right now to you, these were all the HCs down there, and that's what I'm trying to tell you.
Okay, thank you.
That these people need help not yesterday, uh, two years ago, need help today.
I agree.
And I'm not here to, to speak about myself, I'm here to be a proud American. My, my dad served, the United States Navy submarine, submarine served on, is USS Columbia 319.
That's great.
And that's where I come from.
Well, thank you, sir. All right, we'll do the last question in the back. Yes, sir.
I'd like to know, I'm also a transit worker, I went down there for one day, I had two different cancers, as well as osteoarthritis and a bunch of other things, just from breathing that stuff in. And the guy who did the biopsy on me told me I was down at ground zero before I said a word. The doctor who did the surgery on my thyroid cancer also told me I was down at ground zero before I said a word about that. So my question is, you mentioned the osteoarthritis and other diseases, rare diseases, is there a study currently going on that people can volunteer for that went down at ground zero?
Yes, absolutely, uh, if, as a responder?
I was a volunteer, I was volunteering transit.
So you're then a responder?
You asked a volunteer to go down, stay at the first Saturday after.
So for the responders, there are a host of studies that people can volunteer for. Um, one of the ones, for example, well, the thyroid study is ongoing now, um, but again, if you, if you contact me through this, through the Congressman's office, we can give you the contact information for that study at Sinai. The other very important one, um, that is happening and coming soon is a World Trade Center control study. And just to put two seconds to explain this, you know, when we look at responders, when you guys were down in zero, most of you were pretty healthy guys, you know, you're quite fit, police officers, construction workers, transit guys, transit workers. And always in the studies that compare the workers, the healthy workers, to the general population to see whether things are elevated, right, in the workers? What's the wrong comparison? Right? Because in the general population, there's a lot of people who are not healthy. They're not healthy, so it's not the right comparison. So for now, to attack that problem where we're not covering what we should cover, we're developing a controlled group for the World Trade Center responder population. Healthy police officers, healthy construction workers, we'll be doing that starting in September. And my feeling is we're gonna get the real answers that that gentleman asked about, and you're asking about now, about the diseases that are prevalent in the population. So please, contact us through the Congressman's office, we'll either get back to myself or have somebody get back to you. Are you Staten Island resident?
Brooklyn.
Brooklyn, so you might wanna talk to Dr. Klobuchar as well, and we can get back to you on that. Okay.
You know when the study will be completed? Any idea? When will it be completed?
Completed? The, the control study is just starting, all right? So that's, that's gonna be a while. The one about the thyroid is ongoing, so that, I think that you have already the third year of the four-year study, so it's not long.
Last one, all right, man, next one.
My name is Eric.
Just one sec, I, I'm gonna get you a mic, sorry.
My question is for, uh...
Sorry, we're gonna work on mic rehearsals next time. How's it going?
My question is for Ms. Feldman. Um, one of the things you stated earlier was that 14% of the claimants were survivors, and the rest were first responders. It doesn't seem like there was a lot of outreach there. And I'm saying that because, Carl, through your talk, you also discussed people applying now. Just today, I met someone who was no further than I was, a thousand yards away, and did not know about the Victims Compensation Fund, they also didn't know about the health program. So I'm curious, do you have any plans to continue the socialization of these programs?
Sure. Well, I, I actually wanna take that one first, because that, that's on elected officials too. This is a program that has been sanctioned by the United States Congress, and it's one of the problems with Congress and elected officials as they normally operate, they sign a bill and forget about it. So part of what we are trying to do today is that as we consider all of your respective networks, everybody who you know, whether through your personal life, whether through your careers, we are urging you all to spread the word. I'm doing the same on national TV, on local TV, on social media. Um, I know the folks from the Health Center, the Victims Compensation Fund are also pushing this as hard as can be, but we have got to engage in this on a high level and a grassroots level, uh, that especially after this thing gets replenished. Keep in mind that it's for the duration of the century, and there was a critical question that has been asked, over and over and over again, as we have continued to advocate for this, and the question is, well, how much is this gonna cost? People would ask that at first, believe it or not. How much is this going to cost? And you know what our answer has been, you know what my answer has been? It doesn't matter. It does not matter. This will be a program that is here, and we all have to push the word out, that it's here for those who are there for us. So with that, um, we're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna stop. We're gonna keep on fighting tooth and nail until the President of the United States signs this bill. I am more motivated and inspired than ever before through this atmosphere we're in today. And thank you for being here, and, and thank you most of all for your service to this city, this state, and, and this country. God bless you all, God bless the United States of America.